I'd like to call this meeting, it's a regular meeting and a special meeting of the Uba City City Council to order. I have some information I need to read about our virtual technology. The governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor also issued Executive Order N 33-20, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are the top priority for the city of Uba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. How to participate in this virtual meeting? The meeting is utilizing the Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the question and answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the questions and answers section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the questions and answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by the council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. May I please have roll call?
Mayor Boomgarden?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Espendola?
Yeah.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Here.
Okay, could you please rise? Vice Mayor Shaw will lead us in invocation.
Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day that you've given us, Father, and we just thank you for the special time of year that we have. We come together and celebrate your birth, and we celebrate what has brought together this world. Father, we just pray that you will just give us peace, as we sing so often about during this time of year. Father, you'll give us safety and healing in our community, and healing amongst our residents who are facing this pandemic. And Father, we just pray for wisdom for this council and all of the members of this community that are having to make decisions about our future. And we give you the glory and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Lieutenant Green, would you do the honor, please, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Attorney, could we have the report on closed-session items, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you, sir. Agenda modifications, approval of the agenda? I do note that staff is pulling item number 17, which is the Richland Village Affordable Housing. Any other modifications? Seeing none? We'll go ahead and move on to item one, which is the ceremonial presentation. It's a retirement proclamation to our longtime Lieutenant Michael Green. I'm going to turn this over to Police Chief, almost called you Fire Chief. Sorry about that. Well, you were that, yeah, that's true. Who will start the presentation? Chief, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, we appreciate the opportunity to honor Lieutenant Michael Green after 30 years of service with the Uba City Police Department. We're going to read some stuff on Michael at the end. The mayor has some stuff. But right now, I want to start out the presentation by having a couple of the Police Officers Association members come up. We have the President, Michael Gwinup, investigator. We have Vice President David Santana, and then we have Charan Singh and Isabel Resendis, both detectives as well. And they have something to present to, but they forgot to get it.
Oh, do we need that? Yeah. All right. Perfect.
Lieutenant Green, you mind stepping forward? On behalf of the Uba City Peace Officers Association, we'd like to present you with some shadow boxes. Those are the mementas that you've collected throughout your 30 years of service with the police department. And just so you know, this flag is fake right now. But we have a flag that we are going to fly at the police department on your last day, and it will be presented to you to put into this shadow box. But on behalf of the POA, we'd just like to thank you and wish you well on your retirement.
Okay, we have a couple more items we would like to present. Mike, we had a question on their Uba City Police Department Facebook a couple of weeks ago, and basically said, I think, which officer has held the most titles at the department? And there was only 17 different positions that Mike's held in his time with the PD. I don't want to be redundant, because the mayor's going to say a lot of the same stuff. But I would also like to honor his family, first of all. His wife, the Honorable Judge Susan Green, and I'll have you come up here in a minute. His daughter, Mary, who is a senior, junior this year at Uba City, but she's going to graduate anyways probably early. And then his son, sophomore Connor, he goes to University of Nevada Reno. So they'll be up here in just a second. We have something to give to them. We have a couple more items, but I have to walk over and grab them. First of all, we'd like to give an appreciation of his retirement, or to honor his retirement of our 30 years, an honorable certificate. Michael, that's for you. And I'm not going to read the whole thing. Just want, we want to, the highest medal that we give at the police department is what we call the Meritorious Service Medal. We only give it to people that have done an outstanding job throughout their career, never discredited the police department, have been a total credit to the police department, and have held a variety of titles like Michael has, the responsibilities. And he's done a fantastic job in every endeavor that he's ever chosen. So in appreciation of that, I want to present the Meritorious Service Medal.
Nice. Which, thank you. And tradition is you have to wear this for 24 hours without taking it off? It's 6:10.
And then, one more thing.
Does your ring a few hots along, please?
Because at the police department, I don't think people ever realize how much time, effort, dedication, suffering that you have to put up as a police officer, never knowing when they're coming home, never knowing what time they're going to be here. We just wanted to make sure that we at least acknowledge that with the presentation to the Judge Susan Green, on behalf of the Uba City Police Department. And Mayor Mark Boomgarden is going to give a resolution or proclamation. And then Michael have his five seconds.
Okay. I'm not going to get too close, but you won't be able to hear me. First, it's an honor to be standing here to be able to present this. You and I worked alongside each other for a few years, and always impressed with the work that you did. Okay, we've already introduced Lieutenant Green. Michael Green was hired as a police officer by the city of Uba City on August 13, 1988. He was a relief dispatcher clerk and was hired as a full-time police officer on May 18, 1991. Michael successfully completed and was selected to the positions of police sergeant and police lieutenant. Michael has been recognized with numerous awards and commendations for his exemplary professional performance, including over 50 letters of appreciation from the public, peers, and supervisors. Most notably was his letter of recognition from the Sutter County District Attorney's Office for his professional investigation of the Michael Lyons kidnapping and homicide, resulting in the ultimate successful prosecution of the suspect in that case. Michael was recognized in 1994 as the Uba City Police Department Police Officer of the Year for his selfless dedication to the citizens of Uba City. Michael has served as an example of a leader, team player, and innovator in the capacity as an employee of the city of Uba City. He demonstrated his thirst for knowledge by completing his Bachelor of Science and Master's of Science while actively working in patrol investigations. No easy task doing all of that. Lieutenant Michael Green took an oath when he was hired to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution. An oath he never broke and kept faith with the public, and so honorably and served our city for more than 30 years. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Mark Boomgarden, Mayor of the city of Uba City, on behalf of our entire council, including Councilwoman Espendola, and the citizens we serve, do hereby congratulate Lieutenant Michael Green on the occasion of his honorable retirement, December 30, 2020. We wish Lieutenant Green the very best in the future.
I'd just like to say thank you to all those that have come here today. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for your time here today. It's been an honor to work with so many dedicated and talented individuals, and, you know, I certainly take that into my next journey. And I really appreciate your friendship, your camaraderie, and the experiences we've shared together. So, thank you.
Okay. Michael did the city proud, that is for sure. Okay, our next items, item number two, discussion and action on measures to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic. And tonight, I have the great privilege of inviting three very important people in our community representing Adventist Wright Out Hospital. With us tonight are the President, Rick Rossin, the Patient Care Executive, Cindy Gordon, and the Emergency Department Director, who I noticed we have, we misrepresented your name, and I apologize for that, is Dr. Kamara Graham. But we'll get started with President Rossin, please, if you don't mind.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this evening. What we want to do this evening is share with you where we're at today, as we deal as a community with the impact of COVID-19. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to come to the city of Uba City, to share with that, and also the introduction of Cindy Gordon, our Patient Care Executive, who has done an unbelievable job standing up our Emergency Incident Command System in March. Those, intensity of those processes are not set up to go for nine months, they're set up to go for days, yet we've kept the intensity in our organization over the entire period from March of this year till now, and as we see the impact of this hitting our communities more than ever. And Dr. Kamara Graham, who, when she took this job of Director of our Emergency Medical, Emergency Department, I don't think ever realized what was coming, as did any of us. But I thank God every day that she's in that position, because the teamwork has been extraordinary. And she can speak to it from a physician's perspective of what we're seeing. And we want to make sure we're available to answer any questions that you may have. But most of all, in my position, it's a blessing to represent the 2,300 or so healthcare workers that show up every day under challenging and difficult circumstances to continue to care for our community even at risk to themselves. I'm humbled by that, I'm honored by that, and most of all, we want the community to understand that we aren't just here to serve the community, we are the community. Our people live here. It's hard to go anywhere in this town without running into somebody who works at Wright Out, is a neighbor to somebody that works at Wright Out, has a family member that works at Wright Out. And it's just an honor to be integral into the community that we serve. COVID-19 has definitely been probably the biggest challenge in healthcare in my lifetime, and has impacted our community in every conceivable way. It has impacted our healthcare system, it has impacted our economy, and impacted all of our lives in ways that we could not have foreseen. And as I stand here today, Uba and Sutter Counties are the hotspot, not just in California, but in the nation. And we are seeing that in our hospital. And one of the things this has exposed from my perspective is the fact that in the healthcare industry, we've created a myth, and that myth is, you know, you can do whatever you want, and when things go good, we're really good at fixing you. And I think that myth now has exploded, because the fact is, the rift we've seen in the healthcare delivery system between what we do and what public health does has been exposed, because the health of the public is all of our responsibility. And I think we've chosen the path to be as transparent as we possibly can with the capacity challenges and the issues we have, because there is no way through this without engaging every single member of our community. When people show up in our building, oftentimes, then the reason you see videos of stressed-out healthcare workers, and Dr. Graham can speak more to this, there's just a limited amount we can do. We do the best we can to help people through as their bodies fight this off. And that is challenging for a profession that's used to being able to fix things. And what we realize is that the impact on our community is really all of our responsibility, our shared responsibility. And we want people to understand that we are here as a community, we are a deeply connected community, and I think that has shown itself out in the last month. What we're seeing right now in our community is extraordinary spread. We began to see this in early to mid-October. At that time, we had between 10 and 15 COVID patients in our hospital. And we were alarmed, because two weeks before that, we had two COVID patients in our hospital, and we had 33 patients sitting in our emergency department waiting for beds. And we began to think to ourselves, what if we had 40 patients? What if we had 50 COVID patients? What kind of situation are we going to be in? And when we first heard from public health, the rapid day-over-day increases in COVID cases, with Thanksgiving coming, we had an idea of what was coming. We had no idea how fast that would happen, and how fast that would impact our hospital. We were as prepared as we can be, and today we have 62 COVID patients in our hospital. This afternoon, we had 16 patients in our emergency department waiting for beds. And as I explain to people, it's dynamic how our capacity works, because every day we have 40 or so patients that come into the hospital and 40 that go out. Two days of 40 coming in and 25 going out, and we have capacity issues. And, you know, we can be in a crisis, and 16 hours later, it can be all different. So it's a very dynamic situation. But we work with our entire region, and Dr. Graham can speak to that a little bit more in terms of how we make sure that we can get people where they can get the best care possible. Early in this crisis, we saw a period of time where fewer people were coming into our hospital. We would see an average of about 200 patients in our emergency room a day. In a period of March and April, that dropped down to 100. We knew that maybe 20 or 30 didn't necessarily need to be there, but where were the others? And what we began to see when they started coming back was they were coming back sicker. We had more heart attacks in a period of a few weeks than we would normally see in a few months. And we don't want to see that again. And so we've tried to keep a message out there for people to come in and get care. Yes, we may have issues around capacity, but the professional and the focus on the well-being of our patients and our community is there, and we're connected with an entire region of providers to get people where there is capacity to care for them even when we're impacted. And likewise, when others are impacted and we have capacity, we share that through the entire region, working closely with EMS and all of that. What's made the last few weeks particularly challenging is that because our employees live in the community, they're also not exempt from the spread in the community. Today, we have over 100 of our employees out, either COVID-positive or else under quarantine because of exposure. That's a significant impact on our workforce. In March and April, we developed surge plans that we could double our physical capacity, take care of twice the number of patients. But that's contingent on the ability to staff those beds. And because this whole surge has hit the nation all at the same time, and you see this happening across the country, bringing traveler nurses and other things we do to manage surge capacity is not an option. And so Cindy will talk a little bit about what we're doing around workforce management, and many of the creative ways we have been able to find and bring supplemental staff. But what I want the community to understand is the resources are limited. And, you know, the last, what we've seen in the last 15 days is, the mortality of what we've been seeing in the last 15 days is equal to what we saw year-to-date before December 1. This is having more of an impact in nursing homes than it's had before. But, you know, this is a significant change for us, and it's a challenge. Our workforce is tired, they're exhausted, but they keep coming to work because of their commitment to their community and the commitment of their patients. And I couldn't be more proud of that. What we ask the community is do your part as well. You know, help us manage this situation. You know, social distancing, wearing masks, these are ways that we can all impact and prevent COVID continuing to spread in our community. So these are challenging times, and as I said, we have staffing issues, and we look for ways to do that. Now, we've rolled out a lot of ways to do that. We had a conversation with Sutter today, is there a way we can use some of their capacity in their surgical hospital? We started innovation for Adventist Health called the Adventist Health Hospital at Home, where we're actually doing acute care in people's homes now. And I heard just this evening, we have, we just started this week, we have five patients now in our hospital at home. All this helps decant the capacity issues in the physical space, and the more we can find ways to do that, the more we share capacity throughout the region, the better we're going to be able to deal with that. We knew Thanksgiving gatherings were going to have an impact, and we have seen that in the last week or two. We know Christmas is coming, and we fully expect that we are not at our peak yet. We're at 60 today, we believe we could be, we could see hospitalizations in our hospital as high as 80, or even higher than that. And again, it all really depends on how we, as a community, come together and impact this situation. I have a lot of confidence in our community. I have confidence in the seriousness that people are taking this. And I think the more that we can reinforce that and also share the responsibility, we can do our part, and we will do our part. The competence, the skill level, the expertise, we're doing everything we can to create the capacity that we can to serve this community. But it takes everybody. It takes how, what we do in our businesses, it takes, you know, what we do in our private lives. This is a community-wide effort to manage this. So I want to share that as a start off, and I'd like Cindy to come up now and talk a little bit about things from her perspective. Again, like I said, she's run our Incident Command. I get to sound like I know what I'm talking about, she really knows what she's talking about. So I'd like to introduce Cindy Gordon. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. It's always great to follow you. Such a great speaker. So I'm Cindy Gordon, I'm the Patient Care Executive at Adventist Health and Wright Out, been a nurse since 1980. Hope I never see another pandemic. I just wanted to echo a little something that Rick said. The community is really now the first responders in our fight against the pandemic. So just a little bit of a shift in thinking there. So just a typical day during the pandemic, we start out with Incident Command, debrief at 8 o'clock. We go through the current census in the House, our COVID patients, we make sure we've got adequate supplies, which we are blessed with those. We talk about our staffing, we talk about the initiatives that are tied to COVID, because not only is it caring for COVID itself, there are state-mandated testing that we will need to do for our employees once a week in the COVID units, and there is the vaccines that are arriving any day, and how we distribute and track and plan for all of those. Those are not easy tasks during normal times, but with the workforce that you need to expand and the workforce that's shrinking, you can see how there is a great deal of stress in the organization. So we start that, and then we talk about it with a bigger group. And then today, for example, one of the nurses that is, one of the lead nurses in our skilled nursing facility just came in and said, you know, I'm just so tired, so tired. And she said, you know, I had to talk to a family whose loved one passed away, and she kind of choked up. And the emotion is so powerful, because not only are we looking at a disease that we can't predict what's going to happen each day, what we're going to see when we walk in the door, we're also physically tired, as many people are working extra hard during this time. And then you've got the social challenges of schools opening, schools closing, that uncertainty, and then just the real, the real impact of the loss of the traditional social gatherings that we've all come to know. So those are all part of the stress that you feel. And then when you walk up on the floors, like in our COVID unit, normally what you see down that hallway is people bustling in and out. What you see now is carts lined up with PPE, and you see doors closed, and you don't see anybody, because they're all in the rooms with the patients. So a very eerie, different dynamic. The equipment that they have to wear, it's physically challenging. We get to wear masks that you can breathe through, they're wearing N95s or Pappers and equipment around their waist to go in, and they're having somebody watch them put that equipment on and take it off, so they don't go home and spread COVID to their families. So there is that added responsibility for themselves, their care workers, and their families. So you go down the hallway, and then you go to the next floor, and you're usually just really chipper, bright, shiny, charge nurse, looks like her eyes are bloodshot, and you say, so what's going on today? And she goes, well, you know, I came in at 3:00 this morning, and I'm tired. And I said, okay, you know... And I said, okay, you know, and I listened to her and she talked and she said, it's just hard because we can't help some of these patients. And the COVID population is so, Dr. Graham can talk about this, it's so dynamic. I mean, somebody can be looking and looking pretty good and talking to you and saturating well, and all of a sudden they're really sick and they may need to go to the ICU. So those are some of the challenges that we're facing. But we have such a great team that works together. We communicate with the county, we communicate with the emergency department to work on providing care to the community. And all of our staff know that what we're doing is for our community. We want to keep our ED open so that it can take care of the patients that need emergent care. And that's what we're doing. And we're doing it, I think we're doing it really well, actually, considering the circumstances. So what we do for capacity management is our great physicians come in early, they come in earlier than they ever have to see what potential discharges there are. Our case management team works diligently to make sure that we can move patients to the right level of care. And again, that's challenging. Today, I think we have sixteen patients that need a skilled or assisted living placement. And because of COVID, they have restricted access. They're not able to take full capacity. So they aren't able to leave the hospital. So that's, that's something that's more difficult. And then, as Rick was saying, these patients that we get with COVID, they have a longer length of stay because they're pretty sick if they get hospitalized. They're there for a really good reason. And if they're in the intensive care unit and they have to get on a breathing tube and a ventilator, they're going to be there for weeks. And normally, our beds, the normal length of stay is, you know, about three and a half days in the hospital. And in the ICU, it's about four days. And then they move to other places in the hospital. So again, that shrinks our capacity, the beds that we can turn, you know, over to take care of the rest of the community. So that, one of the things we've done is, like Rick alluded to, is the hospital at home was a brilliant idea where people, like my dad, said, I'm not going to the hospital if your mother can't go with me. And I don't know, there may be other people out there, but he's definitely one of those. And so for people that know that there is an option, they did have to be hospitalized and that was an option, that may have people seek care that were afraid because they can't have their loved ones. So that's been a challenge for us and for the families. It's a cause of really moral distress on both sides when we can't allow family members in, except, you know, under certain situations. And it's really tough on the families. So a lot of talk about that in the hospital, of course. So we work on the discharges. We are working on the staffing end as well. You can imagine with a hundred employees out, that's difficult to recover from. So we are working with the schools of nursing and there's an emergency proclamation passed by the VRN that they have granted first semester nursing students the equivalency of a certified nursing assistant, which is somebody that helps the nurse at the bedside with, you know, the bathing, the daily activities, can help walk the patients, those really important things that a really busy nurse that if we're short, can help out a lot. So I think the last time that I looked, we were up to eighteen offers that we had made. The students are thrilled to be able to come in and help and we're equally thrilled to have that partnership with them. So that's one of the creative things we're doing. We're also looking at team nursing, which is something that you can do when you have a nurse that floats in from another department, that buddies up with a regular nurse there and kind of is their mentor for that shift. So we're doing some work around that and that's one of the models that we may use. So really, just using every tool we have in our remuneration, I think that's the right way to say that, to keep the hospital open for the community. And I think that the message that I would like to send to the community is that you have a really great hospital, we're making it better all the time, and that supporting the staff by the things that I know are going to be happening in the next couple of days, the show of support from the community is really important to them, they appreciate it. And that the best thing to help us out is to do the things that Rick said and stay safe in the community. So we are your last responder in COVID and the community is the first. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Graham.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. I, as you can imagine, the last eleven months or so have been a little bit of a whirlwind in the emergency department, to say the least. We started about this time last year, hearing first of the virus being in other places and kind of thinking, oh, well, what if that happens to come here? By March, we were seeing New York kind of get decimated. And at that point, we were starting to see some of our first cases. And at that point, it was really flying blind. It was figuring out what is this, what do we need to do for these patients, what is any of the medical advice that we can get, but also how do we keep each other safe? PAPs were something that you used occasionally with a TB patient, but it wasn't something you put on multiple times a day. It also wasn't something that we had many of because you usually had maybe one or two patients at a time in the whole hospital. So we learned a lot in the beginning about PPE, about keeping each other safe, about how to just reorganize how we run a cardiac arrest. Who needs to be in the room? How do we get to patients and give them the care they need? We were very fortunate that in that first wave, we did okay. And two of my physicians were selfless enough to go to, one to New York to work in their COVID ICU and then another one actually went to Italy and worked in a COVID tent. So they brought back a lot of information that was really helpful on how do we get to these patients, what is working, what's not working, and where do we go from there? The staff, all of our physician, our advanced providers have been extremely flexible and they're currently trying to see patients in places they've never had to see a patient before. When that volume dropped, we all were worried. We know that these patients are out there. We knew that they were sitting at home, some of them with, you know, an appendicitis that came because it's now burst instead of us getting to take it out earlier. And we were worried about where those people were, as Rick said. As our volume has increased and now as we are really starting to see that big surge of COVID patients, our capacity at the hospital has been what we've tried to work through the most. We are still seeing one hundred and seventy to two hundred patients a day through the emergency department. And we have forty-four beds. When we're holding eighteen to twenty-five patients, that limits our ability to just get patients in a place where I can push on their belly, where we can talk about things. Along with that, the visitor restrictions, which we absolutely have to do in order to protect everyone, makes it very hard when you're trying to make end-of-life decisions or difficult decisions and you're not able to hold the wife's hand, you're not able to talk them through that situation. And so I think the amount of flexibility that they've had over the last several months has been truly amazing. Right now, we are doing a lot in the emergency department to try and see as many patients as we possibly can and continue to keep people moving. We have hallway beds, which we've always kind of utilized, but we've also started to use every square foot that we can. We've turned places that previously had not been patient care areas into patient care areas. And we are trying to separate people to try and limit exposures. And everyone has kind of changed all of their roles over the last few months. We are currently struggling with having a significant number of COVID patients. And so we do everything we can to separate everybody, but like Cindy had alluded to, these patients get very sick very quickly. And one of the phenomena that had been discussed in New York City was that the patients themselves don't often notice how sick they are. So their family member will come home and say, you look bad, you need to go to the hospital. And they will be breathing thirty times a minute and hypoxic and they won't really themselves realize it. And so a lot of patients, by the time they come to us, are fairly sick. It also then makes that decision of who can go home safely and who can't very difficult. I think from our departments, we're in the same boat, everyone's a little bit exhausted. But some of the best things that I think we've gotten out of this pandemic is our ability to work together in the emergency department, but also throughout the hospital. The relationships that we have with the admitting physicians and the consultants, but also all of the hospitals around us. Typically, pre-COVID, if we were going to transfer a patient, it was because they needed a specialist. It was that they needed a very special neurosurgeon or ENT, something that we didn't have. And now the decision every time we admit a patient is, is there somewhere else maybe we should think about? And that's not always an easy task. Often, it takes seven or eight phone calls by the physician, talking to different facilities to see if we can get a patient moved out. But we've had great relationships with several of the other hospitals that can take lower acuity patients. They may not be able to take an ICU patient, but they could take a cellulitis. And they've been very, very caring and understanding and have been communicating with us very closely. The issue we see especially now, as we've moved into the more restrictive tier and had the shutdown, is that it's not just us. We are a hotspot, we do have a lot of cases, but at this point, you are now calling hospitals and they're saying, we don't have any beds either. We can't accept transfers. We've got holds in our emergency department. And so there comes a point where not everything can just be transferred out. And ultimately, we want them to be close if we can. If they do have to make one of those life-changing decisions, we want to be able to keep them in our community where they can be with family. So there's been a lot of change. We absolutely want to thank the community that has sent so much love and outreach and gifts and thoughts and prayers. It's been wonderful. But also thank them for their patience because we are learning every single day and we will continue to learn. I think from the emergency department, in terms of what our ask is from the community, is to please, please socially distance, wear your mask. One of the things that Cindy had talked about is that the vaccine is coming. We're working on procedures to get it out for our healthcare workers that are seeing these COVID patients. But as this comes out, if you have questions, ask. We've got a lot of information on the vaccines. We have stayed very up to date on these. We are always happy. If you've got questions about them, ask us. That is what we're here for. We are part of the community and we want to make sure that we are giving everyone as much information as possible. So just let us know. Otherwise, I think we'll take any questions.
Thank you so much. I'm going to turn it over to the council for some questions. I'm not sure who's going to be the one that answers, but hopefully maybe all three of you, if they come. Before I do that, though, it's, you just need to follow up and acknowledge the work of you and your staff. I think a lot of it goes unnoticed, some of it does go noticed, but know, know that we know you're working hard and we know that you have the community's best interest at heart. And we'll go ahead and, if you will, field some questions from the council. We'll start with Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you guys for being here, as the mayor said. And one of the things in these chambers, we often get to see our heroes here. And those are most oftentimes referred to as our first responders with PD and FIRE. But you guys are heroes in this community and I just want to say thank you. I've heard the stories. I've got friends who are nurses, doctors, I've sat down with spouses that's lost their loved one in your hospital. I know you guys are doing everything you can. And from one council person, as the vice mayor, I just want to say thank you for everything you're doing. So I do have some questions, though. And Rick, thank you for being here. Thank you for all three of you being here. You did a great job with the chamber a few days ago, as I've shared. The community has heard for eleven months, wear a mask, social distance, wash your hands, to where I don't think there's anyone out there that doesn't know the general rules. My concern, and I've brought this up with Dr. Lou multiple times now, is we know what those variables are, but what are we doing to take care of our community and what can we do as electeds to help? Because my concern is the capacity of our hospital. And when we start getting into diversion, and, you know, I understand that, and I don't know what the count is or anything, but over the course of time, we've taken others in and we've sent others out. Do we have people from outside of our region that's been sent here that's impacting our capacity and what is our, what is our real capacity to take more people? And I know you've gone to the home health care and kudos for you, whoever thought that up ingenious, because you're thinking outside of the box. But really, what is our capacity would be my first question with what we have with our residents. Not saying the others aren't important, but I'm just trying to figure out if half of our hospital is taken up by people that we've taken in or is it ten percent? A wag, a simple guess would work.
Yeah, so I'm not aware of any patients in our hospital right now that have not come from out of our community.
So they're all from our-
That happened early on when we had capacity, when San Joaquin County was getting hit pretty hard. It kind of went in a wave this summer. So it started in Southern California, came up through Central California and probably got to us mid-July to August. Back in that period, we got transfers in, we were able to help out a little bit. After the fires in Napa County, we got a few patients from mainly cardiac surgery patients and others from St. Helena Hospital, which just reopened this last week. But that has not been in a little while. Furthermore, they've been able to take patients from us now, now that they've reopened. So we're not taking up any capacity in our hospital right now from patients from other areas. If anything, our community is generating more need than we have the capacity to take care of. And I would say we're mainly outmigrating at this point in time. So yeah, that's certainly a question that comes up. There's another related question that relates to surgery. And I was asked this question on Friday, are we canceling elective surgeries? And the answer then was, we're looking at it day to day. As of Monday, the answer to that question changed to yes. And it's mainly because we don't have enough staff to take care of the patients that are being admitted to the hospital. And so what Cindy's team has done is we've shut down as much of the elective surgery as we could. And we're deploying the nurses who would normally work in surgery and pack you up to the floors to support the floor nurses in taking care of those patients. That's never easy, the inconvenience of patients that have had surgery scheduled and that, and the surgeons who are wanting to do the surgery. But the fact is, we have to prioritize and we have to prioritize taking care of the patients that are here. Many of those surgeries can be done at another time. And as I said, this can be very dynamic. But right, as of right now, all elective surgeries, we're canceling and mainly because we need the workforce. Many of those are outpatient, wouldn't take up inpatient beds, they come in, they go out. But right now, we need the staff. So we're open to do surgery on cardiac surgeries, our trauma department stays open, emergency surgeries that come in, the ED, we're available for. But for those planned elective surgeries, we're putting those off for the time being till we see a change in this situation.
And along those lines, Rick, if I can just reiterate, because you mentioned this on Friday as well, is that's elective. If someone comes in and they have to have open-heart surgery because it's an emergency, those people are getting taken care of.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So we have the surgeon, the cardiologist, the teams, the on-call teams, the trauma teams. We haven't changed that at all. Our capacity to take care of emergencies is unchanged. And we will take care of every emergency that comes in. It's much safer for people to come in and let us do what we can for them than it would be for them to drive farther distances, especially for strokes, heart attacks and things like that. So I'll let Dr. Graham address this because I think it's an important issue because I think people here, and I think this is what happened this spring, you know, I don't want to go to the emergency department because I might get COVID or they're full or whatever reason. And I think there's really detrimental impacts to that. So I'll let you kind of address it.
So one of, I think, the biggest pride of- So one of, I think, the biggest pride of emergency medicine physicians is that we take care of anyone that walks through the door. We don't ever have to ask them what their insurance is, or if they can pay. We take care of people. I think that is more important in a place like Wright Out, because there aren't a lot of close hospitals that can do trauma, that can do stroke, that can do heart attacks the way that we do. And so when you talk about diversion, that's something we've talked about frequently, is we can't go on diversion. That would be such a disservice to our community. And so what we have done, though, is very much staffed up the emergency department. We've had a lot of traveling nurses when we can get them. A lot of them are emergency department nurses, because we can move and flex a lot easier in the emergency department to move to one area or to another to accommodate someone who is very sick. But there are things that we have good protocols for. If you're having a stroke and absolutely we can't see you, it's still safer to come and get that medication that you need, and then we can get you somewhere. It's safer for us to stabilize your airway, to make sure that you're not actually having a heart attack before you drive that hour to Sacramento or to Roseville. And so I think that's an important thing to know, is the emergency department has been able to accommodate all of that, and we continue to be able to do that. It's just a little bit of some puzzle pieces every once in a while. But we're open, and we will take care of all patients.
And I appreciate you answering that, because I've heard that through the community. The reason our hospital is full is because we've taken so many from others. And so, you know, the community needs to know. And that's a lot of what tonight is about, is so they understand our current situation and what happens. And, you know, leading into a next question, if I can continue, Mr. Mayor, I have like four or five.
Make sure everybody gets a chance, Dave.
Okay, I will. If I can get five minutes from everyone, I'll at least get an hour here. But no, it's, the other question you hear is, you know, you talked about the emergency rooms. And I know that in years past, people use emergency rooms as urgent care. You know, people go in for a cold, people go in for a sniffle. Has that decreased any at all, or is that still?
I think it's hard. So there's something called the Prudently Person Act, which is what allows us to continue to see patients, because without being a healthcare professional, telling whether that chest pain is reflux and you need to take Atums, or if you're having a heart attack, can be very difficult. I think we've seen definitely a decrease in our pediatric population, because there's no school. So they're not getting as much of the regular cold. There's also no sports. So we're not seeing as many of the broken arms and things like that. I think we still do see, I think some of that volume has been replaced with COVID concerns. And people who want to know, what do they need to do? Am I exposed? Do I need to be tested? Do I need to quarantine? Do I have to call my work? So I think the volume has stayed about the same. Last month, we were about 11% lower than our typical November. So definitely, volume is still on the lower side. We see most of those so far have been pediatric and some of our minor complaints. But we've also seen a pretty big uptick in patients just there because they need to get tested. But we also did just open our urgent care. So we do have another place for patients to go, where they can be seen and be seen quickly, and then very easily transferred into our hospital if they need to.
Correct. And that's down on Bogro, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate that. I'll just leave with a final comment. I was joking, Mr. Mayor, but the-
It worked.
The, they know me too well. No, I would just ask if there's anything that we can do as a city to help you. Please reach out and ask, because our community is, is why we're here, is why you're here. And we want to stand with you guys and do anything we can to help our community.
Thank you so much.
Sean.
No questions, other than I just want to express appreciation for all the work you folks are doing and everybody who works with you. It's so appreciated and comforting to hear the information that you provided tonight. Really appreciate it, and doing the best, there's no way we can, but doing the best to understand the plight that you go through, and then the stress and the hardship and the sacrifice, and we really appreciate that. I am, as mentioned, Doctor, you mentioned that too, if there's, anybody had a question to ask you, is there a preferred method that we reach you? And what would that be?
I think we can go through our, there's a line that they can ask questions. I know I get stuff from-
Linda's waving her hand.
We have the best Linda.
Call you, Linda? All right, all right. I'm just going to put, call Linda.
We're also-
Call the phone number up.
Yeah. We're also very happy if there's, if there's particular groups in the community that have questions, that want to have one of us come in, speak, and answer questions. We are more than happy to. And we can come and answer more specific questions. We, you know, can do outreach. We're happy to come virtually, set up virtual meetings for groups if they need to.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Espandola, questions?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and Sean, sorry, Councilman Harris, I'm getting used to your new title. Very, very well said in the manner of the question and how the seriousness of the issue. Dr. Graham, you and I were on a panel together, and I haven't had a chance to reconnect with you.
Yes, we were.
And unfortunately, I'm in virtual land for reasons of COVID. And Cindy, I get your emails, and we haven't been able to connect, I think because of I guess the question, some of the things that the community always seems to ask, number one, on the issue, why, and I don't, and I'm not trying to ask you, but just the health and science of it, why is it required to wear a mask? Why is it so important to wear a mask?
That's a great question. So I think a lot of the misinformation that's gone around is that the mask is protecting me. And while recently, actually within the last month, there was a study that came out that showed that the mask actually did provide some protection to the mask wearer, that's not the reason why we wear masks. The reason is that a significant amount of patients who have COVID are asymptomatic, but they also have a high enough viral load that they can infect others. And the mask keeps you from spreading that to others. And so the way I've described it before is, wearing your mask is showing your community that you care about them. You may not know who next to you in the grocery store is on chemo or has lung conditions. And so wearing your mask is saying, I care about you. It is some benefit, the regular mask, to the mask wearer, which we know now, and that is great. But the masks are to limit the spread of COVID-19. And so it is kind of the ultimate act of love for your community, is to wear your mask.
And do you, do you see that people in E are, are coming in? I know that you probably provide masks, but are questions of that asked to the patients? You know, were you wearing a mask? Were you socially distancing? Where did you anticipate or think you became infected? Because one of the things that we've seen change over the months is initially, you know, the conversation was not going out and shopping or going to restaurants. And now, it's, the spread seems at least, from what Dr. Lou and other health officers, social gathering situations. Does the hospital, do you have any data in reference to how the majority of the patients coming in to the hospital are being infected?
So most of the actual data is collected by public health when they do their contact tracing. So all of kind of the official data is what public health has, because they go into a lot more depth than we typically do in the emergency department. What we're trying to figure out is, are you safe to go home? Or do you need to be admitted? Or do you need something in between? From personal experience, the majority of the people come right out, and that's their first line, is, I made a mistake. I went to a baby shower. I went to a wedding. I went to Thanksgiving, and now I'm terrified. And the majority of cases that we're seeing, we'll see several patients from the same family admitted at the same time, because they had a large gathering. So that's been a significant amount of the spread that we've seen.
And so those spreads, do you think that people just become, I mean, like all of us, you know, the wear and tear of time and keeping up with, wearing the mask and the social distancing, it can be challenging for everyday behavior?
Completely. It's, you know, the COVID fatigue is real. It's something we all desperately miss, seeing our family. We all miss this time of year. It doesn't feel the same. We've all missed, you know, birth of other loved ones. We've had a lot of things we've missed. But the longer that this goes on, the longer we're going to continue to miss those things. And so I know it's difficult, but I think if we all rally together as a community, that we are going to stop it, and we take a stand, and we do the things that we need to do, then we will get through this much quicker. There is a vaccine coming, but the vaccine is not the end-all, be-all. So even after people get a vaccine, we are still looking at months of these types of practices that we need. So this is not something that we can just hope is going to be over soon. And so we need to rally together, and we need to make it the norm. We need to make it what we're all doing as a community for each other, so that we can get back to going out and seeing each other, and having dinner at restaurants, and going out shopping, because this is not very far from over at this point. And we need to do it together, or else we're not going to make any headway at all.
I will, Mayor, I'm just going to say a comment in here. I think that I am extremely grateful to each of you and the entire healthcare industry and our scientists for bringing some sort of relief. And I think your words carry so much to us and to the community that I'm, I just want for all of us to be healthy and safe. And it's for those reasons, I've been wearing my mask since March. I haven't, you know, the most times I'm out, I am wearing the mask. I'm home right now, so that's why I'm not wearing a mask. But I want to say that I am extremely grateful for your ever-ending care and love and help for our community, and know that I support you in any way that you need for the support from our city. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kirchner.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if there's much left to be said, but just know that you are valued, and please take that back and let your staff and their families know that as well. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. Well, first, I want to thank Linda Plummer for coordinating this. Called her on a kind of a spur of the moment after a conversation with Mr. Rossin. And so thank you for the efforts you put forth in getting these individuals to speak to us tonight. It's been said before, you know that we greatly appreciate and acknowledge the hard work that you all do. And if there's anything that the City of Yuba City can do, we would like to try to participate in doing that. We appreciate the transparency. We appreciate the information. We can appreciate the passion as well. It comes through. Know that we will be translating tonight's communication, so that those in our community that don't, that speak Spanish or Punjabi sign language, et cetera, will coordinate that with you as well, Linda, so you see what that looks like before we distribute it. But just cannot thank you enough for taking time out of your busy, busy, busy schedules to come spend some time with us and present to the citizens of Yuba City. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. All right. It's a great opportunity to have folks like Rick, Dr. Graham, and Cindy present to us and share their thoughts with the community. Just really appreciate the time they took this evening. And again, we'll be making this available so that others can see it who weren't able to see it tonight. Item number three, appearance of interested citizens. Due to COVID-19, residents are encouraged to attend the city council meeting via web conference or submit comments via email. Consistent with public health guidelines for social distancing, limited seating is available in the council chamber and the sutter room. If an attendee does not have a facial covering, one will be provided. Comments may be made either at the council chamber podium or from the sutter room. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? I do have a speaker card for former Councilman Manny Cardozo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse me here for a moment. This is a committee update, boards that I've been on, the Regional Housing Authority and the Feather River Air Quality. I'm going to start with the Feather River Air Quality. The City of Yuba City received a Blue Sky Grant Project, which I was on the Finance Ad hoc Committee on that. There was eight folks that participated in it, and the board passed this last week at our board meeting unanimously. The city is going to receive $45,000 grant for the Blue Sky Projects, AB2766, for the school project improvement projects for the city. And then on the Regional Housing Authority, this is concerning Richland Village Project, which I can talk about it since you took it off the schedule for tonight. 176 units of affordable housing apartments. These are one, two, and three bedrooms. The, we, it's a transaction between the Regional Housing Authority and Center of Community Affordable Housing for the property located 470 Bernard Avenue. It's a bare piece of land. It was appraised at $1.2 million, which is, which will be great. This will help leverage the city's money to apply for ACD and AHSC Low Income Housing Tax Credits, HCD Home, AHP Federal Home Loan Bank. So this is all good news for our community, and I'm hoping whoever takes my place will make sure this goes forward, because we do need it in our community. And I'm here for any questions from the council.
Any questions from the council? Start with you, Councilwoman. Anybody else here? Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Very much appreciate the updates. Do we have any other public comment from the audience? Seeing none, how about on email?
No public comment.
Okay. We'll close item three, and we'll move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anyone from the public like to speak on these items? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Nobody online and nobody here? All right. We do need to announce a correction on item number four. The December 1 minutes, item seven is changed to reflect that Councilmember Shaw moved and Councilmember Espandola seconded the motion to elect Mark Boomgarden as mayor. With that, do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
Through the mayor.
That we- Pardon me?
So, through the mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar items four, five. Where are we at?
Six, seven, eight, nine.
Yeah, six, seven, eight, nine. Ten, eleven, twelve. Gosh, so.
Okay. You have a first and a second on the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion to approve the consent calendar passes unanimously. Item 13, business items, the levy of the 2021 Annual Assessment of the Downtown Yuba City Business Improvement District. This will be presented by Brad McIntyre.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Brad McIntyre, your community services. I'm going to share my screen here for a second. Hopefully, this works. Hopefully, Ciara will be able to see that, and she can kind of follow along up on the screen as well. So I'm here this evening, representing the Downtown Business Association, requesting council to conduct a public hearing, and after considering- council to conduct a public hearing and after consideration of that, adopt a resolution confirming the annual report and levying the assessment for the Downtown Business Improvement District for the calendar year of 2021. On November 17th, the city council received the 2021 Annual Report from the Downtown Business Association, and that was presented by Sandy Drown at the time. As it relates to the levy assessment, there are no changes for the calendar year 2021. This is a map of the downtown Plumas area and the business district. Again, the recommendation, you can see there, to conduct a public hearing and after consideration, adopt a resolution to confirm the annual report and levy the assessment for the Downtown Business Improvement District for the calendar year of 2021. I'd gladly entertain any questions at this time.
Any questions for our community service director? Hearing none. Public hearing on the levy of the 2021 Annual Assessment of the Downtown Yuba City Business Improvement District is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment, state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public here in the chambers? Okay. Online?
No public comment.
No public comment? All right. Hearing no further comment on this issue, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the council. For action, hopefully.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Because we do have one council member online, I do suggest that we do roll call votes for all remaining votes for the meeting.
We will do that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your flexibility.
Through the mayor. I move that we adopt a resolution confirming the annual report for the Yuba City Downtown Business Association and levying the assessment for the Downtown Business Improvement District for calendar year 2021.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw, second by Councilman Harris for item B. Can we have roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Esmondola?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Aye.
Mayor Boomgarden?
Aye. Item 13 passes unanimously. Move ahead to item 14, Police Department Body-Worn and In-Car Camera Program. We will have a presentation by Police Lieutenant Jim Runyon. Welcome, Lieutenant.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So I'm going to go through a quick presentation here, and this is on our digital evidence at the police department and the body worn camera and in-car camera. Go to the next slide. This is just a brief overview of kind of where we're at right now with the existing car camera program that we have. I've worked with the, the police department has worked with the Information Technology Department on updating our current cameras. We're currently set to get new cameras with the existing stuff this year. The current vendor is Data 911. And we've had a lot of issues with these cameras that we've tried to work out with the vendors and have had not much success, particularly syncing the cameras so that when you turn on your body camera, your car camera will also turn on and vice versa. In addition to that, there's been a lot of man-hours that have been spent in tagging these videos that are by the officers on a daily basis in addition to issues with downloading that information technology has had to assist us with. Again, exhausting a lot of man-hours that we have not been able to overcome with this The body cameras as well, they don't record in what we call a passive mode. In other words, when an officer turns his body camera on, what you're getting is what's happening right there. But there's other cameras out here, which I'm going to talk about, that once you turn that camera on, it captures the, up to two minutes prior to that incident happening, which we see nationwide as a big issue because a lot of times, things happen rapidly in police work. Officers are in the middle of a critical incident, turn their camera on, but we missed everything that led up to that. So after researching, we've determined that Axon, it's the leading vendor in the United States for police worn body cameras, that was the best one to meet our needs and overcome some of the issues that we're having. One of the things I'll briefly touch on here in a sec, but it's an idea of the technology that Axon has, they have a sensor that can go in your gun holster. Anytime an officer drives, draws his firearm, body camera turns on automatically. Not only does it turn his or her body camera on, it's a Bluetooth signal that will activate any body camera within 30 feet of that officer. So it'll get every officer's body camera turned on that's in that area. So again, right now, as we sit, our cameras are out of warranty. They're set to be replaced. I mentioned the syncing issues of the body cameras and the dash cameras. Labeling is a huge issue for us. Auto labeling is something that the Axon cameras do. I'll touch on that in just a second. The passive issues, digital evidence sharing is a big issue and becoming a big issue. Right now, we have to download videos. Someone has to sit there, click on a video, wait for it to download, put it onto either a DVD or USB drive and either hand-deliver it or someone comes and gets it from us. We're just behind the times with this technology. So what we're proposing is going with Axon with a five-year contract. It would be a full warranty on the body cameras and dash cameras, as well as replacements for that equipment along the way that's included in the cost. One of the big things is, which I haven't touched on yet, is unlimited storage for the digital evidence. Currently, we have to spend money on servers, upgrade them, maintain them. Axon is an off-site. It's cloud-based, it's secure, and it's unlimited. So we don't have to worry about storage of these videos. We have DVDs piling up in our evidence room from videos that we're archiving because the server can't hold all these videos at a certain point. Addresses the passive recording that I spoke of, both for in-car cameras and body worn cameras. Automatic activation triggers, I talked about the holsters. It also has that same activation on the light bar switch. So when an officer turns on the emergency lights, it's constantly sending out a Bluetooth signal, turning on any body camera within 30 feet of that police car. So again, officers arriving at critical incidents, it's making up for the human error that's got, that does happen with officers just not getting their stuff turned on in The evidence with this system, everything uploads and we can, as quickly as clicking certain videos, make them available to the DA's office that they can retrieve on their end. We don't have to wait for it to download and we can select which ones are available to them. So that speeds that process up significantly. In addition to that, one of the other big features is, on the, excuse me, on the downloading portion of it, it's instantaneous versus, right now, we, we are constantly dealing with the system not downloading the videos in time. And so the officers are having to wait to tag their videos. I mentioned the auto labeling. Currently, right now, officers have to go into the system and label their videos. With this system, it auto-taggs videos to an incident, which takes up, again, a ton of time for officers right now and it alleviates that issue. We've researched other agencies and it actually is working. It's tagging the video to the incident, which makes things a lot smoother for officers and the DA's office. So again, body cameras, obviously, we believe they're important for transparency to the public and for officer safety reasons. This is a quick snapshot of what, on the left, there's Data 911, what we currently have versus Axon on the right, and I'll be, break this down. Right now, we have $192,000 in the Technology Replacement Fund, set to replace the existing equipment. Going down the next four fiscal years, we budget $54,000 for the maintenance and replacement of the equipment. Axon on the right is a five-year contract where the first year it comes in at $131,453. We currently have enough to cover that first year. Going into the second year, there's leftover money, if you will, from the Technology Replacement Fund that would cover the $105,291 for year two. So years three through five are where there's an increased cost and that cost difference is down below there in red of $153,874. So the recommendation is to adopt a resolution awarding the purchase of new body worn and in-car cameras to Axon Enterprise of Scottsdale in the amount of $552,618.57 for a five-year contract, finding that it's in the best interest of the city. Are there any questions I could answer?
Hello, council? None? 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 Worthwhile investment to me? Okay, I do have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Any chance that that $153,874.08 could be covered potentially by any grant funds?
We couldn't guarantee that. There's always a possibility that might happen in the future. NCCSIF, our insurance fund, sometimes they'll give us up to $3,000 a year to spend on cameras. But the, we look for grants every year. We spend a lot of time and I don't see the likelihood of that. And I would like to add this too, and I know I've said it a million times, but if you go to a football game or a baseball game, you look how many cameras they use and the liability associated with baseball as opposed to being a law enforcement officer. And we have one camera, you know, it's like trying to watch a baseball game through a straw. So we want to have the best straw that we can get out there and Axon is top of the line.
Okay. Do you have any public comment on this?
No public comment.
No public comment? All right. Turn it over for council action.
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion to approve, I'm assuming that's items A and B? Yes. Okay. Items A and B. I have a motion to approve by Councilman Harris and a second by Councilwoman Esmondola. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Esmondola?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Boomgarden?
Yes. Item 14 passes unanimously. Thank you, Lieutenant Runyon, for your presentation. Item 15, Traffic Signal Maintenance Contract Award. This will be presented by our interim city manager, Diana Langley. There she goes. Had my head on a swivel.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So before I get started, I actually want to recognize that we have our city clerk, Jackie Silman, in the audience tonight. So thank you, Jackie. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. So this item is a traffic signal maintenance contract award. So Public Works is responsible for maintaining 40 signalized intersections throughout the city. So we do not maintain traffic signals on the state highways. That's Caltrans. So these are traffic signals at the local intersections. The electrical division, we've been contracting out for quite a few years just because of the staffing levels in the electrical division, and it's more cost-effective to contract out this service. And so in order to assure that the city continues to receive the most qualified cost competitive signal maintenance, staff issued an RFP. So we received two proposals, so Bear Electrical Solutions and St. Francis Electric. St. Francis Electric has been our contractor for the last, I believe it's been about six years, and they've done an excellent job. As we, the staff reviewed the proposals, they found that St. Francis Electric and Bear Electrical Solutions are both very well-qualified contractors, so it really came down to a matter of price. So Bear Electrical Solutions was the lowest contractor, and so staff's recommending award of a contract to Bear Electrical Solutions for $58,400. That covers $38,400 for routine maintenance and the $20,000 for emergency response. Now, there are years that the $20,000 is not enough for emergency response. There are situations where vehicles hit wipeout controllers. For some reason, this last year was a big year for controllers being wiped out. Other times, you might have a signal pole that's wiped out. But, you know, going into it, we're requesting $20,000 for emergency services. So the other provisions are the contract may be extended for up to four years, and the contract extensions are subject to cost increases, not to exceed the Consumer Price Index for the San Francisco All Urban Wage Earners. So again, the recommendation is to adopt a resolution awarding a service agreement to Bear Electrical Solutions for the 2021 calendar year in the amount of $58,400, with the finding that it's the best interest of the city and authorize the Public Works Director to execute up to four one-year extensions to the traffic signal maintenance contract on behalf of the city. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
From the council, please. Through the mayor, if I may? Please, Mr. Harris. Diana, on the emergency response, what is their response time? Say if something happened in the middle of the night?
We're fortunate because there's actually an employee that lives in Yuba City for Bear Electrical, and so we've found that their response time is pretty quick. Now, they might have to go down to the yard and get materials, so that can take a little bit more time. But typically, we like to see a response within an hour or so.
Thank you.
The other thing I would like to note is we always have an electrician on call, all the time. And so if necessary, our electrician responds, and then that's when they really assess and determine if the contractor needs to come out to provide supplemental help.
Thank you. I do have one quick question, and that's more of a curiosity question. In regards to emergency response, do we try to cost-recover when we can?
We do.
Okay.
Yes. So we work closely with the police department to get the incident report, work with finance in terms of going after their insurance company for reimbursement.
All right. Council action, please. Oh, hold on. Before Shannon says anything, he was ready to.
Close agenda.
Gotcha. Do we have any comments from the public?
No public comment.
Okay. Council?
Through the mayor. I move to adopt a resolution awarding a service agreement for traffic signal maintenance to Bear Electrical Systems, Inc. of Aliso, California, in the amount of $58,400, with the findings best interest of the city and authorize the Public Works Director to execute up to four one-year contract extensions to the traffic signal maintenance contract on behalf of the city. Annual cost increase not to exceed the CPI of San Francisco area and all urban wage earners, published by the U.S. Department of Labor for the prior 12-month period.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw and a second by Councilman Harris. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Esmondola?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Aye.
Mayor Boomgarden?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, number 15. We'll move to number 16. State Route 20 Corridor Improvements Project Phase Two, again, presented by Diana Langley, interim city manager, and also Public Works Director.
All right. So in 2017, the city utilized a community design grant through SECOG, it was $100,000, to improve the median on Highway 20 between Clark and Stafford. And I think even today, that median still provides a lot of aesthetic, is very aesthetically pleasing as you're driving down the corridor. And so in 2019, council authorized the city manager to execute a MOU with SECOG to receive an additional $100,000 through the community design program. And so we're before you tonight, based upon council's request previously, to identify options available for the utilization of not only the $100,000, but there's a 10% match requirement. And so I have three options to discuss tonight and are hoping to get a direction from council in terms of which option you'd like to continue with. So option one is Highway 20, and you have Clark Avenue to the west, Orange to the east, and $135 is available indeed for this project. And so what $135 would get you is to improve the center median. If you also wanted to include along the north and south side of the street, that would be an additional approximately $115,000 for a total cost of $250,000. But just the center median would be approximately $135,000. So that includes design, construction... So that includes design, construction, construction management, all of it. And the aesthetic would be very similar to the median between Stafford and Clark. Option two would be to complete the section between Stafford and Clark. And so again, Highway 20, Stafford, Clark, here's the median that's been improved. So we would actually remove the asphalt on the north side of the street where the former planter was filled in. And also along the south side, there's a wide enough sidewalk there, you can remove a portion of that and create the planter again. And so this would complete the section where you would have not only the median, but then also the landscaping on the north and south side. It would not take away from existing driveways. The trees would be such that you would be able to see vehicles if they, you're waiting to turn out of one of the driveways, you'd be able to see oncoming vehicles. And also the intent would be not to obstruct signage. Option three would be to improve the median. So this one's a little bit different. It's the median between Highway 20 eastbound and the frontage road. So here's Wheeler and then you've got Shasta, Kylie, and then the on-ramp. And so that median right now is like a stamped brick with a little bit of landscaping, but this would enhance it further. If you wanted to do this whole section in terms of what's shown here, that cost would be an estimated $300,000. So $135,000 for this portion with $165,000 if you wanted to also address these portions as well. And I should note, this is Dutch Brothers and so this portion has already been completed and that landscaping is shown right here. So each proposed improvement option is estimated to cost approximately $135,000 including the design, construction, 10% contingency. So as noted, we do have funding in the account. So $100,000 is the community design money from SECOG. There's $35,000 of Transportation Development Act funds. And then there is $91,000 of general fund available in that account if council so chose to spend general fund money on this project. With that, requesting direction from council in terms of the option that you would like to proceed with.
Any questions for Ms. Langley?
Through the mayor. Ms. Langley, I appreciate all the information, but as far as linear feet, you know, I mean we've got, we've got the different options. Do we continue from the entry point of Highway 99, working back towards the 10th Street Bridge? Or do we, you know, take the entry point of coming from Marysville from 10th Street Bridge and do that section in front of Wheeler? I ask in linear feet because I'm trying to figure out what's going to give us the biggest bang for our buck? Where can we spend the 135 and get more coverage? Because if it's an ideal world, I'd love to do it all, you know, make the whole Colusa Avenue look great. But how can we, which section will give us more coverage is what I'm trying to ask?
It's a matter of how you look at it. If you look at this section between Clark and Orange, it's in the center median and so people will see it driving both directions versus option three, it's in the, you know, adjacent to the eastbound lane. And so really you have a traffic going eastbound that's going to get the benefit of that. Going back to option two where you have a completed section, again, that's going to cover both directions of traffic and it's about the same length as the section between Clark and Orange. So if you're just looking at straight linear footage, it's really option three is a little bit longer, but they are pretty equivalent in terms of length. So it's just perspective in terms of how would you like to approach it?
All right, thank you.
Through the mayor. Once the project is completed, I noticed typically there's a lot of trash that blows through that corridor. Does the city moving forward maintain that?
The city, yes. So one of the things with Caltrans, as we get the encroachment permit, is they require that the city enter into a maintenance agreement where then we do the maintenance of the improvement. So if you'll notice on the section between Stafford and Clark, it's very maintenance friendly in terms of the types of materials. You've got the mix of hardscape with some decomposed granite. The plantings don't require a lot of maintenance in terms of trimming and things like that. So we do try to take into account, you don't want things that are going to necessarily accumulate a lot of debris. And so there's a slight slope on this too, you know, so we do try to take into account as low maintenance as possible. And then the city does have a contract with a landscape contractor to go in periodically and do the cleaning and the trimming.
Thank you, mayor. Diana, I really love each one. It's kind of, it's kind of like Vice Mayor Shaw said, you know, where do you get the bang, most of the bang for the money? I guess when I'm driving around town, that Clark Avenue to Orange, there's a, on the corner of Clark and Highway 20, potentially what's going to go in there?
Well, that's a good question. We've had an application for a Circle K gas station coffee shop. I've also seen, I can see Ben wants to get up here and talk about what's going to go on there, go up there. There's also been discussion of a coffee shop and so I don't know that any plans are necessarily finalized because I think there's still some discussion and Ben might want to come up here and provide more information, but we haven't seen a project finalized. Do you want to add anything, Ben?
So the planning commission approved a Circle K Starbucks, a Circle K coffee shop. A Starbucks has been submitted and it's going through the plan process and they have applied to Caltrans for a drive-through driveway access out to that. So they've just demoed the BIM prop, demoed the old Chevron station and they're working through the coffee shop with a tenant improvement where the Circle K's gone away, but it looks like, right now it's working towards that direction. With those plans, there'll be some landscaping along the frontage of that property that will match this theme. Definitely pros and cons of each. I would tell you that a couple median projects that I've done with a different hat on, 99 and this one with Stafford, is that they're a pain, but they look pretty and they get a lot of notice.
Thank you, Ben. So I'm leaning towards Exhibit A or B. All these.
Yeah. Yeah, while we're discussing, you know, like has already been said, every, all three of them have a lot of merit and wish we could do all three as well. But if we're being asked tonight to decide, one, I'm leaning towards option two for the primary reason that it completes that section. We're not leaving something half done and moving on to somewhere else. Also, that frontage there on Highway 20 between Clark and Stafford, especially on the north side, needs some serious help and I think this would add to that. I think for now, you know, of course hopefully everything is in our future plans, but if we're asked to make a decision tonight, that would be my inclination for those reasons.
I have a question and it regards the, I'm going to call them street trees, for lack of a better term, I guess. Are we responsible for those or are the people that own the property that they front on responsible for those?
Well, that's one thing is that we could request to have those properties join into a lighting and landscape maintenance district for the maintenance of those trees. As of right now, you know, there haven't been discussions related to that. We haven't approached property owners about that, but that would be something we could do is approach them to see if they'd be willing to participate in a lighting and landscape maintenance district because we would be, you know, improving the frontage along their property. However, I will say with that, you know, there are businesses that are concerned about you're going to block the view of my signage, you're going to block the view of my business. And so we've really got to, with our landscape architect, we've tried to take that into consideration in terms of, you know, wanting the ability for customers to see the business and to be able to safely ingress and egress the site, but still, you know, improve that corridor and the aesthetics of that corridor.
Okay, thank you. I know that that corridor's been a long-standing issue with some of its appearance and those folks that do design work consistently point out how they are concerned about that's appearance. So I've heard, I've heard an option two and I heard an exhibit. I'm not sure what, whether you meant option or exhibit, Councilwoman?
I'm sorry, I meant Exhibit A and B were part of the options, I think, and Option One has Exhibit A and then Option Two has Exhibit E. So I'm not answering the question on the options. I'm asking, I'm answering the questions based on the exhibits.
Okay.
So Councilwoman Espendola's looking at the staff report?
Right.
So in the staff report, Exhibit A is the section between Clark and Orange. So that's equivalent to Option One. And Exhibit B is the section between Stafford and Clark, which is the equivalent to Option Two.
So did you have a preference?
I'm good with either one.
Okay.
You know, yeah, what do you do? You want to get the most?
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, right? You know, at some point, hopefully these are all going to be done, which they will be. If I did have a preference, I think I would go with the second one. Yeah. Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, after listening to everything, I would go with Option One and which would be the center of the median between Clark and Orange. And my concerns would be some kind of programmed way that we beautify Colusa Avenue and finish those medians out all the way to the 10th Street Bridge. And then back to the mayor's point, at that point in time, then let's go back and talk to the businesses because we really need their input and their concerns to create that tree and lighting district there, to look at the beautification because I'm uncomfortable going forward with a plan that businesses would have concerns over. So I would be in favor of doing the median all the way first and then going back with a comprehensive plan to finish out the outsides all the way down.
Yes, I get to be the tiebreaker. I'm an option two person. I think we finish the unfinished product. To the vice mayor's point of view, as that next options come up, I think that's when we tackle whether or not we burden the businesses with a lighting and landscaping district.
So are you, are you with the vice mayor? So you said option two?
That option right there.
Okay.
That Councilman Harris was.
Okay.
I think we have three, three and a half.
That was actually one of my preferences.
Okay. We'll give it four then.
Okay. So we will proceed with the design of option two. We will also reach out to the property owners just in terms of maintenance. When you look at this landscaping maintenance spread over those properties, I don't see it being a significant cost, but we will make contact with them and coordinate, make sure that we reach out to them with the design as well before we bring this back to council for approval of plans and specs. Okay? All right, thank you.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do actually have one public comment.
Okay.
From Ken Hall. He also supports option two.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hall. All right. As mentioned earlier, and I may need some guidance from the city attorney here on item 17, we don't need to discuss this, just to note that it was pulled?
Yes, thank you, mayor. That'd be perfectly fine. Also, were you planning on providing formal vote direction or just oral direction to staff on item 16?
I think we were requested for oral communication. I think she received it.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. The next item for us is the special meeting, but before I do that, I do want to acknowledge our city clerk, sir, first meeting, official meeting being here. Also want to acknowledge Supervisor-elect Carmen Baines for being in the audience this evening. Welcome. When, when's your day, sir?
Birthday.
All right. Moving forward to that. Okay, we're going, moving to the special meeting under business. It's item number one, a letter of support of farmers affected by the recent farming bills in India. And we get a presentation by our council member Kirchner. Mr. Kirchner?
Thank you, mayor. Are we going to have the, there it is. Okay, so before I get started, I would like to just reiterate once again how honored I am that the residents, citizens of Yuba City chose me to represent them on the city council. I am humbled and I look forward to working for the next four years with this council. So I'm going to try to get through this accurately because I believe it's a very important issue. For those of you that have been paying attention, in India for the last 19 days, there has been a peaceful protest, but a protest nonetheless. And I'm trying not going to read the letter verbatim, but the issue at stake is, they call them the three laws, and I'll just go down from top to bottom. Law number one, Farmer Produce Trade and Commerce Promotion Facilitation Bill 2020. Number two, Farmers Empowerment and Protection Agreement of Price Assurance and Farmer Services 2020. And the third one is the Essential Commodities Amendment Bill 2020, which was passed by the Indian Parliament in September 2020. I'm going to throw some numbers at you here to let you know how important this is. Eighty-six percent of cultivated farmland in the country of India is five acres, five acres or less. So some of those lots, I'm sure, are probably about as big as this room. So these are, a lot of these are farmers that are just trying to feed their families and get through the day. In the spirit of the law, it was designed to seek, to deregulate India's enormous agriculture sector by allowing farmers to sell their produce to provide buyers beyond government-run wholesale markets where farmers are assured a minimum price for their crops. In addition to that, the agriculture contributes nearly 15% of India's $2.9 trillion economy, employs more than 60% of the country's 1.4 billion people. So this affects many, many, many people. Unfortunately, this sector has been the focus lately of thousands of suicides because the enormous pressure and the farmers that are debt ridden just to try to get through the day. So what do the farmers want? The farmers demand a complete revocation of the three laws and a minimum support price for their produce guaranteed by the government. Now what does this look like locally? Two weeks ago, there was a peaceful protest in San Francisco where people from this community went down to participate. And this Saturday in Sacramento, there is another one scheduled at Sac State. There are many communities in our state and around the country that have written a letter of support for the farmers of India. I think we should follow suit and we have. We are a farming community. That's why this is so important. And we do have members of our community who either are indirectly or directly affected by this because they do have loved ones, relatives that are affected by this. So I am proud that we moved in this direction and I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Councilman. Questions?
Real quick, if I may, mayor?
Please.
Wait, backing up to what you just said, did you say there have been thousands of suicides related to this issue?
That is correct.
Only mackerel.
That is correct.
Wow. All right. And I also learned something from you just now, the great percentage of farms that are five acres or less, that was quite remarkable as well. And also to your point, which I learned recently, is that, well, of course I assumed anyway, but because we are a farming community, there are so many families in our community, there are... And also to your point, which I, I learned recently is that, well, of course I assumed anyway, but because we are a farming community, there are so many families in our community that are directly or indirectly affected by this issue. Many of them, it could have been them being affected directly had they not been just a simple one generation away from India. So I definitely support this gesture a hundred percent and I appreciate you putting the effort into it. I appreciate the phone calls, Carm. It's a good deal that we can do whatever we can in what we can't hear in Yuba City. So I appreciate it.
Other comments, questions? Councilwoman?
I'm, I'm completely in support of, um, thank you, Councilman Kirchner for bringing this forward and bringing this important community of agriculture and of our, part of a, large part of our community. This is, um, what I often talk, speak of is, this is what we say in the words of community is we talk about inclusion. And this is a very included, inclusive aspect of work. We are concerned for others. We are concerned for the, the care and well-being of others. And Supervisor-elect Carm Baines, I'm glad you're in the room and count on the support for this and other things. Thank you.
Through the mayor. You know, understanding our community, which is largely ag-based and knowing that it's our farmers that feed us because without them, we don't eat. It's just that simple. We need to do what we can to support, you know, our community members who have loved ones so far. So, uh, you know, we can't control the government, but we can definitely show the support for the families here and let them know that we are concerned about them because they're a part of our community. So thanks for bringing this forward.
Just echo those comments. Obviously, ag's a big portion of my other life and support those folks here who have relatives there. And, and just support for the, the trials and tribulations. It's amazing to hear some of the numbers you shared with us. Thanks, that was educational as well. I think we have unanimous approval to go ahead and move ahead with the letter. And I know it looks like Shannon's getting ready to hit the talk button. Do I need to take any action on this officially? I, I think we heard comments from everybody in the affirmative.
Yes, the only thing I'd suggest is before you move forward with it, you open up the public comment. And assuming that there's no comment, we could probably go forward on unanimous consent.
Okay. So this is a portion of the, of this item to have some public comment. I don't know if anybody has anything online for us?
No public comment.
Okay, anybody in the audience? Mr. Baines.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, I just want to thank you for consideration. It means a great deal to me and members of, of not just Yuba City or the state of California, but this is international movement. It is not a political movement by any means. It's, you know, this is, it's become a, a human rights thing and I just appreciate you standing with the farmers of India and, not sorry of India, but of Punjab and Haryana. And as we all stand together in solidarity, I assume thank you from the bottom of my heart. I really appreciate it and I can have it forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baines. Okay, I think we have direction on that item. Thank you again, Mr. Kirchner for bringing that up. Item eighteen, future agenda items. This is the opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in the meeting and any that the council may want to bring forward for future meetings. Mr. Harris? Mr. Vice Mayor Shaw? Councilman Kirchner? Councilwoman Espandola? Do we have anything from the public?
No public comments.
Okay. Diana, you don't have anything, do you? Okay. Excuse me, Ms. Langley. Okay, reports and communications. Following reports and communication items are provided for the rest of the council's information. No action can be taken on these items under this section unless the council agrees to include it on a subsequent agenda. And we're going to lead off this evening with Councilmember Espandola.
Thank you. I will be very brief. I, the last two meetings that we, in the last two weeks was Sutter Buttes flood control and Gilizer drainage. And there's some work that is being done on that. And I just would like to echo what our healthcare provider said earlier and that we all can be the answer to the prevention of COVID and the spread of COVID. And we have some few, very few things that we could do and that is wearing our masks, social distancing, no social gatherings with family and loved ones. This is how I've been seeing my family and loved ones virtually. And, um, and support our local businesses in any way that you can. If you can do curbside or phone call ordering, help our local businesses. It's really, really important. And lastly, I just, because this is our last meeting, I think. It is, Mayor? Our last meeting for the year?
Well, unless we have a special or an emergency meeting, yes.
So, um, that, my dog is wanting attention, if you hear. So that, I would just like to say thank you to all my peers, the council, and welcome, you know, Wade, as we, Councilman Kirchner, I'm going to get your last name right, I swear. And that, just welcome all of you and thank you for, um, this year, we've worked together, we've struggled, but we've always stayed on the same principle of what to do best for our community. And I just, at the bottom of my heart, send you the well wishes for Merry Christmas and happy holidays to your, you and your loved ones and all of our city employees and, and to our community, be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I like your dog already, Grace, I've never met him. But anyway, um, last, the last few weeks have been pretty busy, a lot of changes, but not a lot city council related. I spent a lot of the time being sick or out of state. So we'll, I do have a couple of things here. Secog Transportation Committee, attended that meeting. A lot of routine business occurred there, also with the Race Equity Inclusion Subcommittee that I am on. We are going to bring a, the, everything to the full board on Thursday as far as some action items we can do at Secog in order to be more inclusive and sensitive to the diverse populations that we serve out there. The Commercial Corridor Task Force that I'm a part of, there was a lot going on at the meeting. However, what came of it is we are doing a lot of things already, not the least of which was adjusting our development impact fees and also making efforts to streamline the entitlement process, which is much appreciated. Also, they, a white, excuse me, a bike and walk audit they're recommending, which, which of course I referenced in a previous meeting where Ben and I did with Julie Young. So that, that was a good stuff. GSEC, attended the Board of Directors meeting, my, my last one, handing the baton off to the Vice Mayor. I'm sure he will do a great job. And Subuca, most of the items were of a routine nature. There are several projects moving along. Not the least would be the sediment removal up in Live Oak and the Yuba City boat dock area. And also finalizing preparations or the certifications for our 200-year flood protection here in Yuba City. And I'm going to stop there, keep things brief. Very busy, very, talking to, to a lot of folks, but I also want to thank the members of the Subcommittee for the City Manager Project, among many other things you, you guys do. I know it's a lot of work and really appreciate the thoroughness and the speed at which you're getting this accomplished as, as planned. So thank you so much. I'm good.
All right. Councilmember Kirchner?
Well, I'm looking forward to seeing what kind of committees I'm on. But, uh, yeah, I look forward to working with the council on the new year. As far as this coming week, I plan on participating with the flag, excuse me, the Reeds Across America at Sutter Cemetery and the, this ceremony Saturday morning. And I'd like to echo Councilperson Espinola on shop local. Let's support our local economy and, but let's do it safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been busy the last couple of weeks. As Councilmember Harris says, I still want to call you Mayor, sir. It's only been two weeks, but anyway, we've been busy with the, the city manager recruitment that is going well. And I will leave it at that so you can update us, Mr. Mayor, if you would like. But really encouraged with what we've seen so far and that process is, is moving forward. Upcoming meetings that normally would be scheduled, that have been canceled for December, but there's a couple of notable things we need to keep on the radar is Yuba Sutter Transit. As they will be bringing back a recommendation early into either January, February, March timeframe with a potential site selection for a new transit authority home. And as we know, there is one that is just north of City Hall here that has been on their radar as one of potential three sites. So we need to make sure that that is on our radar so we can talk to the transit authority. And of course, I will convey to Mr. Martin that Yuba City is, is interested in having that here. The other one is Regional Waste Management Authority, RWMA. Nothing going on there, but we do have a new JPA that will be coming about and they'll be presenting to us in the early spring sometime, probably March timeframe is last I heard. As Councilmember Harris said, I attended my first GSEC and a couple of notable things there that take away, just to show you how that sphere of influence is growing. They increased the board size from seventy to seventy-five and this has to do with not public sector but private sector investments. Their budget this year was just shy of six million and five million of that did come from the private sector. They're seeking projects and they've got twenty-eight in the hopper and they are trying to currently close on five that will bring about sixteen hundred and fifty jobs to our region. The big issue that we're facing is real estate because all of these companies that are relocating or looking to come to our region are looking for a lot of space. They are looking for office space from thirty-five thousand square feet up to two hundred thousand square feet. And they're not going to wait for us to build it for two or three years. They're looking to be here in thirty, sixty, ninety days as, as Councilmember Harris can attest to on the call, they told us that. What the state is doing is they are looking to not bring back all their state workers to the office and they are looking to lease out those spaces. So one thing that we should do as a city is look and see if there's any of those offices here that they're looking to try to turnkey because GSEC is brokering those to try to get bodies in there. And I think the biggest area that we're going to fit in is if we can get housing going because they're going to need housing. And it is already, you've probably seen it on the news as well. Sacramento is projected to be the number one housing market, the greater Sacramento area in 2021. So back to what we talked about earlier with development impact fees and everything we as a council have done the past year to try to grow this community. The sooner we can get things moving, the better we probably will be because I think we're going to fit into this, this growth through the greater Sacramento area with housing and people wanting to be close enough to drive to the city. But they want to be part of our community and have that small town feel. So those are the things that took out of that. They have two campaigns they're launching nationwide. One is Next Out West, that's the hashtag. The Sacramento area is the next best hotspot in the west. And the one that they're targeting, the San Francisco Bay area, Silicon Valley, is rethink remote. And that's what they're trying to get up here. So that was the big takeaways from that. And then lastly, we are at that time of year, it's Christmas. I'm sure I'm like many of you, it doesn't feel like Christmas, but it is Christmas. And saw a video Sunday, made me stop and think how miracles really do happen. And it's a true story back in World War I where they were in the trenches and all of a sudden they broke out with Silent Night. And the two sides stopped firing and they came out and actually were cordial and played soccer and spent some time together before they went back to the spoils of war. Miracles can't happen. We will come out of this. Merry Christmas to my city, Yuba City, I call it home. Merry Christmas to each and every one of you and thank you to my colleagues, past and present from this year. We've done a lot of good work and I look forward to the year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First, I've, I've got, I've got a few things, so I guess that's a privilege of being a mayor. First, I want to acknowledge Councilman Kirchner truly has hit the ground running and to use, you know, a fire terminology is drinking through a fire hose. It only gets better from here. You, you're a good asset to our, our group. I look forward to working with you and, and we do have a lot of work in front of us, but I do also know that we are a very dedicated group, as Councilwoman Espandola said, and welcome aboard. Couple other things that are going on, let me back up. I want to, I really want to reach out to, again, I know we've said it before, but Adventist Rideout. You know, we can all have our own personal beliefs about COVID and, and it's either this or either that. But the bottom line is our hospital right now is, is, is feeling the brunt of a lot of patients. And those patients are our, are our family, our friends, our relatives, neighbors, et cetera. And to, to use the comment of Mr. Ross and, and I believe it was Ms. Gordon as well, is the first responder right now is us. We need to take responsibility for trying to keep ourselves healthy, irregardless of whether it's COVID or not. It's just a matter of, this is the time of year when stuff's flying around and people need to be as healthy as they can be. And, you know, no drinking and driving, no doing crazy things, just try to, try to lessen the burden on our, our one and only hospital. I do want a little quick shout out to Jackie as well. She, I reached out and said, hey, man, how do I get Rick Ross in here? And so she gave me a cell phone number and, well, I won't post it. Well, maybe I will, but anyway, I appreciate that heads up too. And she passed, he passed me to Linda and Linda Plummer did a fantastic job. One of the things that's been concerning to me, and this goes back to my emergency management background, is as we, as a city continue to plan for, respond to, and, and deal with the things that the pandemic's bringing to us, is what are we doing as a, as a city to, to make sure that we are thinking ahead? And, you know, what, what are our proper emergency plans? What are our contingency plans? And I just want to highlight a meeting that I had with our Fire Chief Jesse Alexander, our Police Chief Rob, Rob Landon, and our interim city manager. They, they've got, they've got, they're doing really good work and I'll just leave it right there. You know, we took a few bullets for having an emergency meeting because we asked the hard questions and we got the, we got the answers. So to our Fire Chief, Police Chief, Interim City Manager, very much appreciate the fact that you've got, you've got the city's back on this. Doesn't mean we've got it all covered, but it means that at least my head hits the pillow at night knowing that, that people are thinking ahead. And that that's what we, that's what we should be doing as a city. We owe it to our residents. I am concerned continually about just making sure that the, the levels of communication continue to flow from all those responders and that's the, you know, our partners, our regional partners. So over the last week, I've, I've been doing some shuttle diplomacy and I've got some more meetings coming up just to make sure that, that the city gets the most current information that it can so that our folks can continue to do the great job of planning and respond in an appropriate fashion. As Dr., or not Dr. Ross, and Mr. Ross had mentioned, you know, this thing's probably going to escalate. I mean, that's what the subject matter experts are saying. So we need to make sure that, that we're addressing those. And I've, I've been pleased with those meetings so far and I'm hopeful that, that will continue to enhance the level of communication that flows amongst the regional partners. I do also, there are some things that are coming up and this involves the ad hoc committees and the, and the committees and the commissions. I've been working, as well as staff has been working with our city attorney in regards to addressing some irregularities that needed to be cleaned up. So I beg the, the council's patience as, as we. So I beg the council's patience as, as we work through those. And I thank our attorney, Shannon Chaffin, for helping to guide us through cleaning up some stuff that, that needed to be addressed. Final sort of work-related item is on the Master Tax Exchange Agreement. We have provided a response to Sutter County. And we continue to await a response back from them. But I just want the community to know that Uba City is very much interested in moving this ahead. And we look forward to the cooperation with the county in getting that done. That does address some of the affordable housing and housing and commercial needs of the community. And we feel it's an important, an important project. As far as just other things that are going on, paying, being a participant with Dr. Lew in the weekly meetings on public health, those have been somewhat spirited of late, as you might imagine. I do know there's some, some changes to those meetings that I think will enhance them. And I'm looking forward to that. That's tomorrow morning. As Vice Mayor Shaw and the former Mayor Harris mentioned, very involved with the city manager process, could easily be one of the most important things we do in 2021 is pick that position. And I want to go ahead and close in memory of two people, if, if I may. First is Chuck Yeager. Chuck Yeager isn't necessarily a resident of Uba City, but he was a frequent visitor. He passed away December ninth at the age of ninety-seven. He was born nineteen twenty-three, nineteen twenty-three and grew up in West Virginia. After graduating high school, enlisted in the Army Air Forces and was trained as a mechanic. At the start of World War II, he was offered fighter pilot training and, and he became a fighter pilot. Nineteen forty-four, he was flying combat missions out of England. By the, the victory in Europe Day, V E Day, he had taken part in downing thirteen enemy planes, one of the highest totals in that war. Nineteen forty-five, he returned home and married his wife, Glenna Dickhouse, who was organizing USO dances in Oroville. First man to break the sound barrier in nineteen forty-seven. In nineteen seventy-five, at the age of fifty-two, he retired from the United States Air Force as a Brigadier General. A true risk-taker, American hero, Chuck Yeager. Godspeed. Second is close in memory of one of our own ex-city employees, John Cardasselli. John passed away December ninth at the age of eighty-seven. He was born nineteen thirty-three in Sacramento. He grew up in Nevada City and moved to Uba City at the age of eighteen. He was a United States Air Force veteran. He served in the Korean War. August first, nineteen sixty-seven through June thirtieth of nineteen ninety, he served with the Uba City Police Department for twenty-three years, twenty-three years of service to our community. He retired as a detective police sergeant. He's a devoted husband, father, grandfather, great-grandfather. Married for thirty-six years to the love of his life, past mayor, our own Uba City past mayor, Karen Cardasselli. He was a devoted and loyal Uba City police officer and a Uba City citizen. And I'd like to close tonight in memory of both Chuck Yeager and John Cardasselli. Godspeed to John Cardasselli and our condolences to Mayor Cardasselli. We'll call this meeting adjourned.